I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome. May I please have a motion for the approval of the minutes from the meeting held February 13th, 2017?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Is there anybody wishing to? Nope. Okay. May I have an approval of the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And the end of news report.
Thank you. Good evening. Our celebration of good news tonight features you, our Sioux Falls School Board members. The Associated School Boards of South Dakota set last week, February 20th through the 24th, as School Board Recognition Week in South Dakota. But since you didn't have a board meeting last week and we didn't want to have to call you together for one more meeting, we wanted to take the time tonight to honor you and thank you for the many hours that you devote to helping the Sioux Falls School District be the best it can be. You bring your parent perspectives, your professional contacts and your knowledge, your passion and your pride in our public school system to the board table, and you represent the community and provide the highest quality education to 24,000 students. You support and encourage another 3,300 staff members, and we thank you for that. Phrases like "local control," "boundaries," and "busing," "finance," "curriculum," that's all new lingo, I'm assuming, that you learned since you joined the school board. And that's thanks to the citizens of Sioux Falls who elected you to guide our district. In honor of your dedicated service, we have updated this plaque that is, has hung in our boardroom since last year, and we've updated it with the latest recognition. We'll proudly display that. In addition, I hope you found the circle pins, the lapel pins that are at your place. They were purchased by finance coordinator Boyd Perkins and are a hot little item around the Sioux Falls School District. So now you each have one, and we hope you wear that pin proudly. And finally, we ventured around the school district a little bit to capture the thoughts of some of our students and staff members who wish to also offer you thanks. So if you'll watch, a quick video, please.
Thank you so much for supporting our students. We couldn't do what we're doing without you each and every day. So thank you, thank you from the bottom of my heart for sacrificing and for serving our community. Thank you.
Thanks for the opportunity to learn and grow.
Thanks for all you do to support kids.
Thank you for your service, School Board.
And I just want to do a shout out to the School Board. Appreciate all of your hard work and service. It is a thankless job. It takes many hours, I know, and you are greatly appreciated by the administration and staff of your school district. And a special shout out to Todd. I can't believe you made it all the way to present, buddy.
Thanks for recess.
Thank you for supporting students.
We just wanted to take this time to thank you for everything that you do for our school district, our students and our staff. You make the difference.
Thank you, School Board. Today, we're walking on our homes. Thanks for great teachers.
School Board members, on behalf of Washington High School and our staff, we'd like to say thank you for the support you provide us in achieving the mission of the district to educate and prepare each student to succeed in the future. So on behalf of all of Washington High School, again, thank you for your support.
Thank you for a positive year, School Board.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to have a great education and learn and be successful.
Thank you, School Board.
We love our school. Thank you, School Board.
So that was just a little bit of our thanks, and then we hope it goes a long ways, especially in those long meetings that you all have to endure to help us provide the best quality education we can for our students. So we offer up an applause for all of you. I also would like to share one other bit of good news. On Friday, we had the privilege of announcing 70 nominees for the Dr. John W. Harris Sioux Falls Teacher of the Year Award. We have quite a cross-section from across the district. I haven't counted up how many schools are represented, but many elementary, middle, and high school teachers are passionately, they, the people who have nominated them have passionately written about why they should be considered as Teacher of the Year. And you will remember that on March 27th, the night of a board meeting, we have a celebration in honor of these nominees and finalists, and we will name the winner for 2017, thanks to Bruce I.D., our sponsor of the Teacher of the Year Award. And we will do that at the dessert reception out at C.J. Calloway's. So that's another thing to celebrate. It doubles the number of nominees that we've had in the past, which is a really remarkable number to reach. So we're very proud of that, and we congratulate all of those teachers who made the list for nominees. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
Well, first, congratulations to all the teachers that are nominated, and Kate's got a big job ahead of her in helping judge. And then thank you to everybody that wished us a good School Board week. We got several personal messages, and that was awesome. That was just incredible. So, thank you. Anybody have any conflicts of interest that need to be disclosed? Hearing none. May I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Need a motion to approve 9A Supplement Consent Agenda Claims to Sanford Health Care.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And that is with one abstention from Board Member Ryder. Now, need a motion for 9B Claims to Vera McKinnon.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries with an abstention from Board Member Parker. Now we move on to reports of the superintendent.
Well, kind of like last month, boy, we've really got to this point in the agenda rather quickly. Now we'll slow this meeting down just a little bit. We've got five reports. Several of them are pretty meaty, and I think that's just the point in the year where we are in terms of reports coming to you and planning for the upcoming years. So we'll kick off tonight with Mr. Knoll talking to us about Gallup Employee Engagement
Good evening. The purpose of this report is to inform the board of the results of the Gallup Employee Engagement Survey that we administered this past December. The purpose of this, or the covering of this is with the district priority for staff development and with the ability to retain the high and quality staff and analyze the participation results of the annual Staff Gallup Employee Engagement Survey. So we have a lot of information. I'll go through here fairly quickly, but the first part... First part of this, the Gallup is widely regarded as one of the very best research-based performance management consultants in the nation, and so that is why we had elected to use them for the past three years for the Gallup survey. In 2016 marks that third consecutive year, and we do each year complete the survey that first week of December. So we do stay consistent with the weeks that we utilize as far as the survey being administered to our staff. Gallup has studied more than 25 million responses to their 12-question employee engagement assessment, and they do quantify that engaged employees are different than satisfied employees. So part of the questioning process they go through, they determine and differentiate between the difference of an engaged employee, one that is working with passion, performing at consistently high levels, and the drive innovation will move, the drive for innovation will move their organization forward. Different than a satisfied employee that may come to work each day, pleased with their work and their place of work and the job that they are doing compared to that engagement where they continually move the, or the system forward, the school forward. The items that matter were the 12 questions that they have identified and researched and gone through. Those 12 questions, I know what is expected of me at work, I have the materials and equipment I need to do my work right, at work I have the opportunity to do what I do best every day, in the last seven days I have received recognition or praise for doing good work, my supervisor or someone at work seems to care about me as a person, there is someone at work who encourages my development, at work my opinion seems to count, the mission or purpose of my company makes me feel my job is important, my associates or fellow employees are committed to doing quality work, I have a best friend at work, in the last six months someone at work has talked to me about my progress, and the final of the 12 this last year I've had opportunities at work to grow and learn. The results of this year's survey are as follows. In 2016, approximately 87% of the Sioux Falls School District employees completed the online survey. Survey participation was up from 83% in 2015, so we're very pleased with the results as far as the participation. The responses to the questions were based on a five-point scale, five meaning extremely satisfied and one meaning extremely dissatisfied, with zero indicating don't know. The chart that you will see first is called the index, Engagement Index. The Engagement Index looks at the percent of each of those three groups actively engaged, not engaged, and actively disengaged. The first group we'll look at is just the Sioux Falls School District results comparative to 2015. If you see each one of those categories with actively engaged, in 2015 that was at 36%. In the 2016 survey, that was at 47%. The not engaged went from 52% and reduced down to 45%, and the actively disengaged went from 12% to 8%. To put this into context, Gallup also showed us how that compares to U.S. working population, so for overall business, educational combined in with that, or industry. And those percentages, actively engaged in 2016 was at 32%, not engaged 51%, and actively disengaged 17%. So you see the Sioux Falls School District in 2016 was above each one of those U.S. population, U.S. working population percentages. If we compare that and break it down just to the educational services, looking at those educational services, actively engaged in 2016 was at 43% compared to the Sioux Falls School District at 47%, not engaged at 46% with the Sioux Falls School District at 45%, and the actively disengaged was at 11% with the Sioux Falls School District being at 8%. So each one of those indexes there favored very well with the Sioux Falls School District, going up considerably from 2015 and comparing favorably to all educational services or the U.S. working population. The next chart that you will see is the category means and year-over-year changes. So each one of these, compared on that five-point scale, will have an overall mean or average for that area for each one of the questions. The first thing that they gave us was an overall grand mean, the overall grand average of all categories combined. In 2015, that overall grand mean was at 3.83, and it went up by 0.18 to 4.01 in 2016. If you see each one of those areas going down through each of the 12 questions, the minimum amount of increase was a 0.06, and I know what is expected of me at work, to an increase of 0.38 in the area of I've received recognition within the last seven days. So every one of the categories, comparative means from 2015 to 2016 went up. When we met with the Gallup individuals or the professionals from Gallup, it said any increase that's a double-digit increase is a very significant increase. So you see the number of categories that increased by that amount. The next chart that we looked at is the 2016 Employee Engagement Results Compared to the Percentile. 50th percentile would be that average, the average of all results taken nationally. So going through these, overall job satisfaction was at a 4.0 for the Sioux Falls School District. That would be ranked at a 73rd percentile, so significantly above the average of 50th percentile. Each one of the categories, as you go through there, were at a minimum, with the least being at 55th percentile, which is my coworkers are committed to quality work each day, going to one that's at the 92nd percentile, which is I do what I do best every single day. Each category there, though, ranked well above that 50th percentile. The next chart that we'll look at is that overall baseline comparative with that grand mean. The grand mean, as I said, was the overall question, the average of those 12 questions combined. The Sioux Falls School District overall grand mean was 4.01, which ranks at the 81st percentile. In 2015, the Sioux Falls School District was at 3.83, which is the 33rd percentile. Gallup Educational Services Database, the 50th percentile is at a 3.90, and Gallup Overall Database at the 50th percentile, this is international, was at a 3.93. So you see comparatively where the Sioux Falls School District was comparative to other educational services, overall Gallup results, and where we compared from the 2015. The next area that I will highlight is just 2016 key headlines. 87% of our staff participated, which is up from 83% in 2015. The Sioux Falls School District had across-the-board engagement improvement. Each item mean increased. Average growth was at a 0.18 of the mean. Four areas at the 80th percentile are above, and one area was at the 90th percentile, or in the 90th percentile. All areas were above the 50th percentile, and the grand mean increased from 3.83 to a 4.01. Gallup Poll also gives each participant or participating district a strengths and opportunities page. The strengths and opportunities identifies two areas of strength for the school district by the results, and then two areas that we could use as opportunities. So the strengths for 2015 were designated as, the first one, I know what is expected of me at work, that was at a 4.14, which is up from 2015 by a 0.17. The second strength for the Sioux Falls School District was at work, I have the opportunity to do what I do best every day. That's at a 4.35, which is up from a 0, or up by 0.06 from 2015. And then they give two areas of opportunity, two areas that we can look at and designate for growth. The first of those, in the last six months, someone at work has talked to me about my progress. That was, or this year is at a 3.84. A year ago, it is still up from a year ago, up by 0.16, but it's still an area of opportunity that we can take advantage of. The second area of opportunity, this last year, I have had the opportunities at work to learn and grow. That was at a 4.12, which is up by 0.12 from the prior year, but still listed as an area Those are the overall results of the 2016 Gallup Poll Employee Engagement Survey Report. And again, that report was given to our staff in December, this past December. The administrative recommendation to the School Board is to acknowledge the results from the Gallup Employee Engagement Survey administered in December of 2016.
Great results. Anybody have any questions?
Will they take the, I know they cut them 100 different ways or more at the building level. Will they take them out and share with their employees and look for feedback and, you know, because we can only move the bar, you know, to help the employees and what they're thinking behind some of these scores and whatnot.
No question, the overall district results are directly influenced and impacted by what they do at each of the buildings. So this last couple of weeks here, especially last week, individuals from Gallup came out and gave training to the buildings. The buildings each have their individual results. They would also have how they scored mean-wise in each one of those categories, and then they would also have per building or per group strengths and opportunities. So the challenge with the buildings and the part, what was directed by Central Office, was to go back and share that information with their leadership group, share that information with their staff, and then put together a plan of what's at least one or two of those areas that they would be able to grow and develop.
Perfect.
Celebrate the success as well, because obviously, as the district increases, you could see significantly from the prior year, that is all built on that building growth.
Yep. I just remember, like, three years ago, sitting around a table going, how do we know what people think and our people have, you know, I mean, I think we all had a feeling, but we didn't, we didn't have a number, we didn't have a result. And so we were a little nervous to see what that first result was going to be, because we hadn't asked people for so long about it, and I think, I don't know that we were necessarily disappointed or surprised in what we saw the first time, but certainly looking at last year's and now this year, you can really tell. And I can feel that even when I'm in buildings and in the community and I talk to people, I can feel that there's a difference in how people feel about their work and their job and their environment. And so I think it's great to have numbers, and I think it's awesome to be able to feel that, too. And so I'm hoping that, obviously, the people in the buildings are having those same feelings, and we can continue to build on that in the future, too.
It was very good to hear from the building principals, as we shared, and have the presenter from Gallup, of all the different things that they're doing within the buildings, to build upon some of that, and just the conversation, too, to be able to bring the staff together and be able to talk about that, and look at specific areas of how can we improve our support of our staff and our buildings.
Great information. Anybody else?
Hearing none. I need a motion to acknowledge results from the Gallup Employee Engagement Survey administered in December of 2016.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion?
But I just think that this, this information, as it becomes more widely known, will also help us with our recruiting efforts within the district. People want to work someplace where their, where their coworkers are engaged, where they know that, that the work that they're doing is recognized as excellent, and I am pretty sure that this will also be a real enhancement to our recruiting efforts. So, good stuff. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's our commitment to our employees as we embarked three years ago, whatever, that the culture in this district matters and everyone's feedback, and this is the board's way of sort of making sure that every year we get that feedback directly to us. And so, great that the participation rate is up, you know, to 87%, and really, really overall, great results.
When the participation rate goes up, it's great to see that the results are good. Usually, when you have more participation, you might expect results to go down. So this is something that we should all be proud of. Next job.
I'd love to see, maybe next year, you know, the 2014, 2015, 2016, really see the progression. It would have been interesting to see where we were in 2014 versus this year, but good results.
The 2014 administration was different than the 2015 and 2016 administration, so next year we would have, we'd really have three years of apples-to-apples comparison that we can show you.
Right. Anything else? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thanks, Jamie.
Our next report is an elementary data coaches report that is coming to you from our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, Ann Smith.
Good evening. You may recall that the district received through a study from the Federal Education Department funds to provide two data coaches beginning in April of 2014. Those data coaches worked at four treatment schools, halftime at each one of the schools. The study with its commensurate funding was complete at the end of the 2015-16 school year. Because we didn't know what the study was going to show, we chose to extend those data coach positions this school year using federal Title II-A funds. We still have not received the results from the federal study. We've contacted them, and they don't yet have an anticipated date for the preliminary results to be released. While those results should provide a more clear picture of the impact of a data coach on student achievement, we're still left with needing to somehow decide what do we need to do to move forward to provide the most effective model for supporting teachers as they build their confidence using data to drive instruction. For several years prior to the data-driven study from the Education Department, we've had instructional coaches working with our teachers. Instructional coaches work individually with teachers to model lessons and provide coaching and feedback. They also have as part of their responsibility working with groups of teachers to support collaboration by gathering and analyzing student data and looking for instructional strategies. So, very similar to what the data coaches were, the difference being that through the federal study, the data coaches had much more intense training and further feedback on how to do this coaching and how to support teachers in using data to drive their instruction. So as we looked at how it worked this year, as we continued those data coaches, using the same model as they had been during the study, so that there was a halftime data coach in a school and a halftime instructional coach, we began to realize that perhaps we should be investigating a slightly different model, continuing the same amount of FTE, but restructuring the responsibilities slightly. If we would reassign 0.5 of those data coaches to be a data trainer, to share the expertise that they had learned through the training that they got in the study with the rest of the instructional coaches, and also with the rest of our building principals, we could also then use the one and a half that's left over and reassign them to our instructional coaching staff to increase the instructional coaching staff, which gives us the ability to look at a slightly different model. What if we have a full-time instructional coach in a building? That full-time instructional coach has had the additional training in how to use data to guide instruction. Do we get a stronger impact from that than we do from just a halftime instructional coach who may have had the training? So we're going to do a study to examine that exact question, and we'll use a standardized measure to measure our results. We'll match up schools based on demographics, since we'll be looking at student growth, and if you have two schools, one where the students are, have a great deal of room for growth, you may see greater growth just because that's the point that they're at. So we'll match up two schools based on demographics and also based then on the model, a full-time instructional coach or a halftime instructional coach. And we'll see if we can begin to see any difference, so that if we were to come and say, we need increased instructional coaching staff, we would also be able to say, this is why. This is what the results showed, that the impact of that would be. There are no costs anticipated for this particular study, since we were already paying for the two data coaches out of our federal II-A funds, we would continue to use those same funds to pay for them next year as we, as we do this study. So with that, I would ask that the board would acknowledge the report on the elementary data coach position.
Any questions for Ann? Hearing none. Can I have a motion to acknowledge the report?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion carries.
Our next report is a report on computer science immersion and a proposal for the board to consider tonight to enter into a contract with Code to the Future. I'm going to start with a couple of quotes here tonight to kind of set the stage. One comes to you from James March, who's an organizational theorist. And this quote is, "The basic problem confronting an organization is to engage in sufficient exploitation to ensure its current viability and, at the same time, devote enough energy to exploration to ensure its future viability." That was kind of the genesis for this conversation, is how do we continue to exploit what we have to continue to be viable as the public school system here in Sioux Falls? The next quote, I thought if I was going to use light bulbs as a backdrop, I should probably have something in there from Thomas Edison. And this quote is, "That books will soon be obsolete in the public schools. Our school system will be completely changed inside of 10 years." And I put the, the date on there sufficiently small, and I think it says 1913. We missed the mark, and we did a lot of great things for us. He missed the mark on that, on that prediction. And I don't know that what I have for you tonight is going to just change everything we do in our schools, but I do think it's a next great step for our school system. Why computer science? Why would we even begin to talk about computer science as, as the next step? And the reason, I think, can be found in many places in our strategic plan. One place that I have in front of you right now says that as a school district, we're committed to, we are committed to provide rigorous, effective, and engaging curriculum instruction for all students to emphasize growth and reduce the achievement gap with special focus in the following areas. And in our strategic plan, it highlights six areas. And rather than go through all six areas that you see in front of you, I want to highlight three of those six areas. Item C that I have on the, on the screen, says that we will have differentiated and engaging pathways, and we do a tremendous job of that in our school district already. So this is the next step in that differentiation and engaging pathway. Item D says that we'll provide equitable access to highly effective programs, and I think that's an area where we can get better in terms of, of offering equitable access. And then item E says that we will have students who, who are prepared for college readiness and/or career preparedness. And I think this program really hits to those three areas in particular. So why else computer science? What, is there anything other than our strategic plan? Well, there are. There are a couple of things, a couple of areas that I'd like to highlight. Number one, when we look at the area of computer science, it's an industry dominated by males. When you look at the number of males in this industry versus the number of females in this industry, there's a, there's a great disparity in that proportion. Earlier this year, I had the opportunity to go to Washington High School and participate, actually observe their Hour of Code. I didn't know that one of those instructors was going to be here tonight, but I see Mark Emery is here, instructor at Washington High School. And he's actually the person who invited me to come to the Hour of Code at Washington High. If you're not familiar with the Hour of Code, what it is, is it's a, it's a school committing to one hour a day of trying to increase the emphasis of what computer science can do in our schools, but also specifically to make, to, to give exposure to computer science to the females in our, in our schools. This particular day, Mr. Emery and others, I know you didn't do it alone, but I know there were others involved in that, brought in female role models from around the community. I know there were at least five that I saw, female role models, working in the computer science industry from, from Raven Industries, from Eros, and from Citibank. And I had an opportunity to speak with three of those five. And I asked them, number one, do you think we're doing enough in terms of computer science instruction in our schools? Well, of course, they're in the industry. I expected them to say no, and they did. And I said, "At what point do you think we should begin computer science instruction in our schools?" And I talked to each one of them independently, so this wasn't a group think thing. And two of them said, "We should start in the elementary," and one of them said, "I think we should begin at kindergarten." So that, that's coming from folks who are in the industry. So the Hour, the Hour of Code really kind of, at that point, got me thinking more and more about what we could do in this particular area. And then when you think about something like this, where we, we provide this instruction to all of our elementary students, male and female, hopefully we begin to get away from that stigma of only males go into this area. So why else? I think because we have an opportunity to break down that, that wall that separates men and women in this particular area. And then the other two things I think I would say are, we want schools that students want to attend, and we want schools that parents want for their children. I think we have that. I just don't want to rest on our laurels. I want to continue to make sure that we have those schools for our community. Back to our strategic plan, when we look in priority area number one, first steps, in that, in our strategic plan, it says that the district will continue to expand and evaluate multiple pathways for students. As a part of this work, the district will explore a partnership with Code to the Future and establish a coding pathway. You might recall seeing that earlier this year in a, in a work session that we had. And I think when we look at those particular areas, I think there are a number of areas within our strategic plan that are potential hits for computer science immersion, areas such as attendance, areas such as engagement with our students, achievement results, and helping, you know, improve the demographics in our specialty schools. When I, when I talk about demographics in particular, I look at our K5, entire K5 school population, and I break down what we have right now. When I look at, and by the way, as you see there, SS will be our specialized schools. So that includes Spanish immersion, that includes all city, that includes our Challenge Center, and that includes Eugene Fields Art, Eugene Field Arts Plus School. Those, those four schools have a total of 1,378 students enrolled in them. When I look at the breakdown from a diversity standpoint, and when I think of diversity, I always think of it on two fronts. I think of it from an ethnic perspective, and I think of it from a socioeconomic perspective. So when I, when I look at our current population of specialized schools and see 1,378 students, I do a breakdown. How many of our students in those schools are white? And the answer is 78%. When I compare that to our total K5 population, we have 63.5% of our elementary school students who are white and 36.5% of our students who are non-white. So you see a bit of a discrepancy there. In our specialty schools, for free and reduced-priced lunch students, 20, 20% of the students in our specialty schools qualify for free and reduced-priced lunches, whereas nearly half of our students qualify across our entire K5 population. And then one other, one other area that I thought would be interesting to look at, it doesn't necessarily fit into the demographics that I defined earlier on, on ethnicity or on socioeconomic status. But we serve a, a sizable population with our ELL services. And in our specialized schools, less than 1%, in fact, it's less than seven tenths of 1% of our student population in our specialty schools are served through ELL services, whereas 10% of our total K5 population is served. I don't put that up there as anything other than facts, looking at the equity and access issue that we talked about earlier. And you, and that's kind of the, so now what? Let's continue to explore. What, so now what? We've looked at a number of things at this point. When I go back to the, to the six areas that I identified earlier and drew out three, what I really get to, and I think the key point that we can begin to address, is the equitable access to highly effective programs. Now I want to take a step back and say that we can put in Code to the Future, and I'll, and I'll talk to you in a little bit about how I see that implementation looking. And we can change the numbers from the previous slide. We can change these numbers quite drastically by picking schools that will have a great impact on socioeconomic status and, and ethnicity, but that won't necessarily change these numbers for these four schools. So I don't know that I'm telling you I have a, I have a cure for this issue. What I'm saying is, we can provide another engaging pathway for our students. I think that all of our specialty programs should be looked at for, under, under this lens, and we should look at each one of them as we go. Now let me go back to where I was. So now what? Let's focus in on the equitable access to highly effective programs. I'm going to show you a YouTube now from a, it's a TEDx from a gentleman that I had an opportunity to meet. He's actually been here at IPC. And this TEDx, it was actually done in June of 2016. And I met Andrew Svihog in July of 2016 at a, at a workshop that I went to called ERDI, or Educational Research and Development Institute, that I know you're aware of. And I'll, I'll let him explain what Code to the Future is.
When I was 15, I became a national chess champion. I was always looking for the next challenge, and I thought that that would be to train someone else to win the nationals. So I took on a few private students, and the following year, one of them won the national kindergarten championship. I was 16. Some of you might be thinking I'm still 16, but I can assure you I'm not. He was five, and that was a life-changing experience for me. Because up until that point, I had been focused on my own individual pursuits, and watching Alec go through that journey of learning along with his kindergarten classmates showed me that I had an even deeper passion for helping kids to win. And when it, when it comes to helping kids to win in education today, I believe that there's a second language that every elementary school should be teaching. Some of you might be thinking I'm referring to German, or Spanish, or Mandarin, but actually, I'm referring to a programming language called Java. Some of you might be thinking coffee. But Java is actually the most popular programming language in the world. It's a text-based language that's capable of supporting many of our most advanced applications, and it's known for being just a little bit hard. In fact, Java has such a bad rap that fewer than 10% of high schools nationally offer it, despite the fact that it's on the AP Computer Science exam and is the most popular programming language used in the industry. What you'll hear from many engineers is that Java is harder to learn than many other languages, but going through the process of learning Java creates a really solid foundation for understanding those other languages. I believe that we need to be teaching Java to students, and that if we're going to ensure equity and help students be prepared to lead the way in the future, that we need to start teaching them Java in elementary school. Having experienced the opportunity to partner with the Cohen Valley Union School District in creating America's first computer science immersion schools, has given me a chance to see what's possible when it comes to advanced computer science in elementary school. I have a few examples from some of the things that students from high needs and high socioeconomic English language learner population school sites have been able to accomplish in less than one year that I'd like to show to you. This is Toni. Toni's a kindergartner who's been learning computer science along with her classmates. Oftentimes, when I visit a school site, the teachers strategically direct me to specific students. I'm sure many of you have had that experience. When I made it into Toni's room, her teacher was occupied and gave me a chance to have kind of an authentic experience. Toni reached out with a small kindergarten voice and said, "Excuse me, sir, would you like to see my project? How can you say no?" So I came over and said, "Of course." And she said, "Well, actually, I need to take a few seconds because I have to fix something." And within a span of around 10 to 15 seconds, she debugged her project and added what's called a conditional statement. And so she turned around the computer and said, "Okay, now you can look. If you click H on the keyboard, the character I just programmed will do a 360." She's in kindergarten. This is Shauna. She's a third grader who's been learning computer science along with her classmates. And one of the things that they've been learning in third grade is an unplugged activity in addition to chess. And this systematic study of chess that they've been going through has been developing their visual spatial abilities to help prepare them for Java in fourth grade. One of the things they've been doing is learning how to play chess blindfolded, and I'd like to show you what that looks like.
I'm going to play that now, a little bit. Okay. I'm going to go pawn e4.
The pawn to a6.
Pawn d4.
The pawn to d6.
Knight c3.
Knight f6.
Knight f3.
E6.
E5.
Capital K.
We skip ahead around 10 moves. She's analyzing between 60 or 70 different choices, keeping all the pieces in her mind on the, on the grid.
D8.
And she made the best move. Afterwards, I asked Shauna, "Do you feel like you have a superpower?" She said, "Actually, yes, I do." This is Aaron. He's in fourth grade, and he's been learning Java along with his classmates. One of the things that they've been doing is learning how to create customized changes in Java that are reflected in their own customized Minecraft mod. Here's him articulating that deductive process.
And, and the other thing is that when you, in a block, you have to like code it in GIMP, and you have to draw it, and when you, then you have to declare, load, register, then when you, when you put it, when you, then you play Minecraft and give it a test, and then your block is fair.
Cool.
I love the videographer, right? So you heard mention of Minecraft. The important distinction here is that the students are not playing Minecraft, they're making Minecraft. And what I mean is, they're actually going through the same process that Marcus Person, the creator of Minecraft, went through, and he was hot code swapping and making edits to the game in Java. And he's in fourth grade. One of his classmates from school says it best.
Is Java, and we're only like in fourth and fifth grade, and we're already learning all of this. So like, this is like, like, well, someday we're going to change the world with all of this like knowledge that we're getting, because like, we're only, like I said, we're only in fourth and fifth grade. It's like, we're already getting all of this, so probably we're going to be better than the high schoolers if we get there.
Love that confidence. You might be thinking, okay, Andrew, did you just handpick the best kids? Is that what we're seeing, the most advanced students? And while it's true that these kids are incredible, what I'm excited to share with you is that they are truly a reflection of what you would see if you walked the buildings. See hundreds of kids with these skills at their respective grade level. And when we think about what happens in many of our communities in respect to sports, we see parents developing skills in students as early as preschool, in some cases, out of a desire to help students be prepared for a potential exit from poverty, right? This might be their lottery ticket, to be able to get out. When we contrast the opportunities and the odds in, in sports with the opportunities in computer science, let's say a student wants to make it into the NBA. There's around 400 jobs for that in the United States. Compare that with the data from the Bureau of Labor Statistics, there's over 1 million unfilled computer science jobs projected to be available by 2020. 400 versus 1 million. I know that asking you to believe that fourth graders can learn Java is a tall order, and I have to admit and confess to you that I had a really hard time believing that they could do it at first as well. And I'm a bit ashamed to admit that, because I should have known better, having seen what they could do in chess and other disciplines. But after having seen and gone through that process with them, I know that they can do it now, and I want every child to have that opportunity. What I'm really trying to say is this, exposure to computer science is important, but I believe that exposure alone is not enough. I believe that if we're going to ensure equity and truly prepare students to lead our nation into the future, that we need to be teaching students real programming languages... into the future, that we need to be teaching students real programming languages, including Java, as early as elementary school. And what I've seen is that if we make awesome normal, students will rise to our expectations. They will rise, they will win, and they'll lead our country into a successful future. And so I offer you my hand, and I ask you to join me in helping them to do that. Thank you very much.
Okay. So Code to the Future, what are we looking at here? We're looking at a program that is steeped in professional development. We're looking at a five-year plan. We're looking at an elementary and middle school plan, and then certainly, there's a high school implication. Ultimately, there's a contract. Let me talk about each one of those. First of all, Code to the Future, it's a company with a growing national presence. They have a focus on critical thinking skills, and I think that is very, very important to see while there's, while we talk about computer science, we talk about coding, we talk about Java, critical thinking skills is what we're really after here. Students will be able to use those critical thinking skills in a variety of areas, and development of computer science skills. Another thing that I think is really important is that we will utilize our current curriculum. So math will still be math, science will still be science, English will still be English. I give you the analogy of in Spanish immersion, we use the delivery method of speaking the Spanish language, but our math curriculum is still our math curriculum. If we adopt Code to the Future, our math curriculum will still be our math curriculum, our English curriculum will still be our English curriculum, the activities associated with those different disciplines will change, and that's what'll have to be learned, not new curriculums. The professional development will actually begin with principals in March, and then with teachers, it'll begin with a two-day summer training. That training will be onsite. The mode of operation for Code to the Future is that they have somebody who will stand and deliver, who will demonstrate for our teachers, and then will assist, teach shoulder-to-shoulder with our teachers, and then sit down and help with the training, or advise and provide feedback to the teacher. The professional development carries on for five years, so it's not those two days in the summer, and you've got to remember that forever. Rather, it's very much an ongoing plan, and we have a plan for implementation in our elementary schools and in our middle schools. The high school, what's that look like? I really don't know at this point. I put down some could-be's, and I want to be careful, because I'm not advocating for anything here, but it could be a new school focus. It could be a component of the CTE Academy. Certainly, there'll be implications for the high school curriculum, though, as it comes to computer science. What that looks like beyond that, I don't know. We actually have five years before we need to implement at the high school level, so probably four years before we need to have a clear plan as to what that looks like. The contract itself calls for 568 days of professional development. That is a lot of professional development in our buildings. Five years of training, the average per year is about a quarter of a million dollars. The total cost of the contract with Code to the Future is $1,264,000, and I would propose that we pay for that through a combination of title funding sources. In working with Ann Smith, we believe we can work that out. Here's the good news and the bad news. The good news is, we can back away from this project in any year, so we can pay for the first year, go through it, at the end of that first year, say, "This isn't what we bargained for," and we can back out of it. The bad news is, so can Code to the Future if we don't implement it with fidelity. I don't go into it with the thought of either one of those things happening, but I guess that's a nice safeguard that we have, in case we would deem that. Here's the plan, the five-year plan. In year one, so this fall, fall of 2017, I would see the implementation at three of our elementary schools. In year three, so in the fall of 2019, we would implement Code to the Future in two of our middle schools, and we would have professional development at each one of those Where are the schools? I'm not ready to say that yet publicly, because I didn't want to presume that you would okay this contract. If you okay this contract, I'll work with the principals at the buildings that we have in mind to make sure that our teachers understand they would be the teachers impacted by this. I don't want our teachers to learn through a board meeting or through the media that their world is about to be changed. Rather, I want them to hear that from their principals. The other thing is, all of our teachers who are in these buildings will have the option to stay in the buildings or go to another building. One of the great benefits we have in Sioux Falls is the benefit of size. So we have a number of elementary schools that will be able to accommodate teachers who don't want to be in these environments. Also, I'm hopeful we'll be able to accommodate those teachers who want to be in these environments and who will want to move into these environments. I will tell you that we are looking at providing opportunities across the city, east to west, and we're looking to help us meet the strategic goals that I talked about earlier as we implement this fall in three elementary schools. What about equipment? Well, the good news is, we're a one-to-one district, so we have devices 3 through 12. We have one-to-one devices 3 through 12. So we have a lot of devices in our elementary schools already. We're going to need more devices, because while we have some devices in second grade, we're going to need more. So we have some devices, but we need more. I've worked with Ann Smith again, and I've worked with Michael Christopherson in ITS to say, "What's the approximate cost here?" And our best number that we can come up with today to provide more devices for first and second grade, and also to provide beefier devices, if you love that technical term, beefier devices for fourth and fifth grade, you'll need those when the students actually begin programming in Java. And the cost for the three elementary schools is right at about a quarter of a million dollars, so another $250,000, and that money would come from capital outlay. So I began with two quotes, and I want to close with two quotes. The first one is from Peter Drucker. You may all remember Peter Drucker. And he said long ago that "Every failure is a failure of a manager." And I put that on me. "Every failure is a failure of a superintendent." I think at this point, what we need to do is take what we do so very well and provide pathways. Take what we do and provide specialized schooling opportunities for our students. The four we have in place are par excellence, and I think we need to take the next step. I think the next step is Code to the Future, and I think the next step ensures that we provide access to students who are in socioeconomically different circumstances than their district-wide peers, and also different circumstances from an ethnicity standpoint, so we don't have this failure on my watch. The last quote that I have comes from a book that I'm actually currently reading called Lead and Disrupt. I hate to put that title up there, because it looks like you're just disrupting everything, and that's not what this book is about. But here is what the book is about. I'll read the quote, and then I'll tell you why I put it in there. "Leaders of companies are charged with making sure that they can sense new threats and seize new opportunities by reconfiguring existing organizational assets." And I think we always have to be aware of the new threats, and here's what I mean by that. We are in an enviable position, I believe, as a city, to continue to grow as a city and as a school district, and I want to make sure that all of the students who live in the Sioux Falls attendance area have opportunities to stay in the Sioux Falls attendance area. I want to make sure that we don't lose those students to any other educational entity. Also, as we look at the ongoing conversation about online schools and virtual schools, and those conversations that have swept our nation with the change in administration, I don't know if that's good or bad. Here's what I do believe. I do believe that if we can continue to provide opportunities for our students that are going to be better than any virtual opportunity or online opportunity, we don't have to worry about those threats. So I want to continue to sharpen our own saw and continue to be the best that we can be in the Sioux Falls School District. That concludes my report. I know that's lengthy, but it's not every day we throw a million-and-a-half-dollar opportunity in front of you, so I wanted to do my due diligence in unpackaging this in front of you. I'll close by saying I'll stand aside for any questions that you may have, and my recommendation to you is that you approve a five-year contract with Code to the Future for implementation of a computer science immersion program at three elementary schools beginning the fall Questions for Dr. Maher?
I think the benefits are, you know, you have to draw the line somewhere in your presentation, but I just look at our, trying to move to community engagement, right? And I look at this, and I just see the possibilities are endless on how to involve our community, our colleges, to come in and help with this at some point. I don't know how or what that looks like, but there's, you know, certainly a lot of opportunity for that. And then I also view it, you know, some would say it's a million-two in costs, it's really an investment, right? And we're expecting a return on that investment, and the return will be through increased graduation rates, workforce development, things that will benefit society down the road. And so this is really part of our DNA in this school district. It's when we stood at the, you know, when we rolled out New Tech High, and it was a similar situation, right? We didn't know if it was gonna work, but we had a gut feeling that it was the right thing to do, and we trusted our gut, and it was right, trying to explain those parents that it doesn't exist today, right? Except maybe in California, and here's a video of this, and "Trust us." And years down the road, it's worked out magnificently, as has the CTE Academy, Spanish immersion, and any of these others that we've taken on, so it's really part of our DNA. So I'm excited about this, the possibility of this investment, and ultimately, to prepare each student for a changing world. The world is changing, it changes every day, and, you know, Thomas Edison was only 100... It's hard to believe back then, you know, but it's true. We have to prepare our kids for a world that's changing all the time, and I think this is a direction I think we need to go for all the reasons that you said, so I'm really excited about the investment opportunity here.
What Doug said.
Yeah, ditto. It's an exciting opportunity, and as we say, we want to prepare our kids, and what a great... And everybody, all the kids will be involved, and that's what excites me.
I think just like with Spanish immersion, where we say, "You learn one foreign language, the second foreign language is going to be easier to learn." I'm not a computer science person by any means, but I imagine that as you learn to think as a programmer, if a new language, like Java somehow gets trumped by another language, having the processes ingrained in your learning will only help you to accelerate learning a whole other language, whatever that next language is. And so I think it's great to challenge your mind and make you think in different ways than just the normal kind of classroom. It gives people a leg up, and so I think it's an exciting adventure as well, in a whole other way that not a lot of people in the United States are doing, and so it's fun to be regionally on that leading edge, you know, and having people, you know, maybe other communities will look to see, "What are we doing, and how can they even implement it in smaller ways into their classrooms?" But it is an exciting opportunity for Sioux Falls, so.
I think I'm most excited about the equitable access piece, just making sure that all of our kids have access to this, just cutting-edge opportunity.
Any other questions?
I'm excited for the students, absolutely. That's most important. But in the plan, I mean, as long as I've been on the board, which is maybe too long, but we've talked about the investment in technology, the investment in all of the new programs, and the thing that sometimes I feel like we've missed is training the trainers, training the teachers, and the investment in that is gonna pay off for the kids, and it's gonna pay off for instructors. They're gonna learn a new language, they're gonna learn... We can do this with the folks that we have in place, and to me, that brings more value to the teachers in the buildings. It just, I mean, it's a win on so many levels. It's a ton of money to invest, but it's worth it, and I move that we move forward.
Great. So I have a motion to approve the five-year contract with the Code to Future for implementation of a computer science immersion program at three elementary schools beginning in the fall of 2017.
Second.
Any further discussion? Allos in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That passes. Well, thank you. That's a... That's a lot of work, just that you just approved right there. I might piggyback a little bit on what Kent said. You know, one of the things that I want to be very cognizant of here is, our teachers work incredibly hard, and our elementary teachers work harder than most people would ever imagine. I don't want to put more on their plate, so professional development and doing this right is a critical piece here. So I appreciate that you recognize that, that is truly a very, very important piece here. Thanks again for that approval. We'll now move to the 2017-18 calendar update, and for those who are wondering, this is not the calendar committee that we have in force that's looking in the calendars down the road, rather, it is an update on the calendar for next year.
The purpose of this report is to present the revised 1718 Sioux Falls School District calendar to the school board for approval. And again, as Dr. Meyer said, this is not the one we're working on with the 2018-19 that we've had the input sessions with. The calendar committee was asked to review and consider changes to the 1718 school calendar specific to both building and district in-service dates and parent-teacher conferences. The request was made by building principals, curriculum services, and district staff. There are five changes being requested to the 1718 calendar revision. The first of those five changes is that the building plan in-service on October 19th be changed to October 19th and not October 23rd. So it should read then, "October 19th, high school PM, district planned in-service," and it would also not be building. So for that first change, in-service for the high school be changed from the 23rd of October to the 19th of October, and will become district instead of building. Part of these changes you'll see as we go through is to take what was a day of building, our district in-service prior to the start of the school year, and move that into the school year, so the building has more time prior to the start of school year. So to do that, we changed that 23rd to the 19th. That was also a day where we had early start for high school, early release, and then we did building in-service, and then after that, we had parent-teacher conferences. So the staff was in the building from 7:00 in the morning till late in the evening. So our parent-teacher conferences will still stay on that night of the 23rd, we're just gonna move the in-service off that night. So that's the first requested change. The second is the middle school fall parent-teacher conferences that we would add as an optional date, October 23rd in the afternoon, because currently, middle school have in-service that morning, and so it's just to add the option for them in the afternoon to be able to have parent-teacher conferences in that afternoon, so that they're not all evening nights, in case there's individuals that can't come in the evening. The third request would be very similar. It's just for that spring parent-teacher conferences, the middle school's spring parent-teacher conferences, to add that option of February 16th as an optional afternoon, because again, that's the second time where they will have in-service in the morning. The fourth, October 23rd, currently reads elementary, middle school, AM, building plan in- in-service, it would change from building to district, because again, we're trying to take a day of that district in-service and remove it from the beginning of the year before school starts, and allow that back to the buildings, and take the district in-service and move it into the school year, where it can be balanced out that way. And then March 29th be a district in-service, where there'd be elementary early dismissal, middle school late start, and high school early start, early dismissal. This would be a district in-service time to allow for the additional building time at the start of the year. So the district would lose that one day prior, prior to the start of the year, they would go back to the building, so they'd have that more additional time within the building. The district to pick up that time would take one of the afternoon in-service times from the buildings, and then have this day on March 29th. The previously reviewed changes are recommendations made by district administration and the calendar committee for your consideration. The district respects the process of advanced planning by all parents and staff and has not requested any changes that alter days currently set as non-school days for students or staff. So the administrative recommendation is adopt, adopt the revisions of the 17-18 school calendar as presented.
Any questions for Jamie?
I, I just have a question that's more general. Why do we have an early dismissal for elementary, but let, but a late, was that late start for a middle school? Especially the day before a holiday weekend?
And the holiday weekend withstanding, the part that has been done for years now has been with the altering those two for busing schedules has been one part of it because of the buses that are being utilized. And so the one starts early, and then has, I'm sorry, starts in the morning, then has the in-service after, the other one goes the opposite. Most of that, as I understand, was based on the busing process. As far as it being before a vacation, that was not determined one way or another in there, it was just set that there would be a day that they would have that. Now, I'm hesitant on that part to change that, because it would alter then possibly a day that people had planned on already. For future calendars, we're trying to be aware of that, and talked to the principals about that over the last two weeks here prior to the next calendar committee, but that would not go back until the 18-19, we'd talk about that. So we're trying to be very aware when we talk to the building principals that if we take these recommendations forward, we're not gonna alter any day that currently has any vacation to our day that is non-school day right now, and other days per general in case parents were planning ahead. So it could be that some elementary had planned to leave in that afternoon already, and by not changing that now for this, they would not miss any school time.
And admittedly, I've never really noticed it before, because this is the first year I have a middle schooler. Not that I'm going anywhere, but it's just like, wow. Yeah, just a general question, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, may I have a motion to adopt the revisions to the 2017 school calendar as presented?
I move.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That carries. Thanks, Jamie.
Next report will be a legislative update from Mr. Veek.
Thank you. Very briefly, we're tracking, or have tracked, 46 bills this session. Of those seven are key bills. Of those seven key bills, six have died, and of those six that have died, one we supported and five we opposed, so I guess we're one in, one in five. There's one left, it's that House Bill 1170, which deals with that conflicts of interest law that was passed last year, that was quite confusing, was trying to straighten that out. We didn't quite get our one amendment to either, to make it apply to all elected officials in the state, but we have had a meeting with the sponsor, and it's amended, it's a lot better than it was two weeks ago. So that bill's still alive, and we are, we, our position was to amend it, and we got it amended, so I think we're now okay with it generally. Other than that, I don't have much else to report. It's not a really busy session.
Thanks for all the work on that, that everyone has done, you know, that's...
Kate, we're telling a lot, doing a lot of work.
Do I need to have a motion?
I'd say, yeah, just to approve the report.
Yep.
Do I move?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Now we have to appoint the board to the local Board of Equalization.
I move to appoint all school board members to the local Board of Equalization in accordance with SDCL 10-11-13, it being understood that all members of the school board will serve as they are able to schedule their time, and authorizing school board members to be paid for attending Board of Equalization hearings beginning Monday, March 20th, 2017, and concluding on Friday, March 24th, 2017, in accordance with SDCL 13-8-37.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That carries.
May I have a motion for adjournment?
Meeting adjourned.